Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Commissioner Odom is present via VTC. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, any changes to the Order of Business?
Uh, Mr. President, there's no change to the Order of Business.
Any questions on the Order of Business? Now I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
I'd move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? All in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda commissioners you wish to discuss? Now I'd look for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a full agenda this evening, so we're gonna get right after it. First item up, we have our City Administrators' Report, and this will be handled by interim City Administrator Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Our first item, City Staff is requesting support in applying to become a North Dakota Cares Community. The North Dakota Cares mission is strengthening an accessible seamless network of support for service members, veterans, families, and survivors. As statewide coalition dedicate to improving understanding of the needs and services required by our heroes, who should be able to access them close to home, North Dakota Cares priority is behavioral health. The North Dakota Cares Community Program will create a welcoming and supportive environment across North Dakota and the city of Dickinson for service members, veterans, families, and survivors. It will increase awareness of local and state support for our service members, veterans, families, and survivors, and establish locally events to educate the community and to honor our service members, veterans, families, and survivors. I have been had conversations with Jessica Clifton, who's a Stark County Veteran Service Officer. She has been supportive of Dickinson becoming a North Dakota Cares Community, and has also volunteered on serving on a steering committee that will be associated with this. In order for us to apply, we do need a resolution of support and a proclamation from the city of Dickinson, and Mayor Decker has that proclamation.
Okay, before I read this proclamation, are there any questions for Mr. Dossinger on the NDCares, um, resolution? Hearing no questions, I'll read the proclamation. The City of Dickinson, North Dakota Proclamation, NDCares. Whereas the freedom and security enjoyed today by the citizens of the United States, the state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson, North Dakota, are direct result of sacrifices made by the men and women of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas the service and sacrifice of the members of the United States Armed Forces and their families continue to provide us with freedom to pursue individual and community goals. And whereas citizens of Dickinson, North Dakota recognize the continued sacrifices of service members, veterans, families, and survivors in defense of this nation and the preservation of freedom. And whereas the citizens of Dickinson, North Dakota recognize the generations of veterans and their families who have proudly and valiantly served this great state and nation, and who have played an integral role in defending our homeland and preserving freedom around the world. And whereas, NDCares in recognition of the United States Armed Forces and their families is working with federal, state, county, city, and private organizations to strengthen an accessible seamless network of support for service members, veterans, families, and survivors within North Dakota. Now, therefore, as President of the City of City Commission, Scott Decker, I do hereby proclaim this day of June 7th, 2022, that the city of Dickinson, North Dakota joins the North Dakota Cares Coalition in supporting service members, veterans, families, and survivors. And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. All in favor, state aye.
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 Pass that to Mr. Dossinger. There's also a resolution that goes with this proclamation?
That is correct.
So, and this would be Resolution? Thirteen dash twenty twenty-two? I'd look for a motion with this resolution?
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
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 Motion carries. And Mr. Dossinger will get some further information on on the NDCares requirements as they come down to us.
That's correct.
Okay. Our next item up, we have some gaming site authorizations.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two gaming site authorization requests. The first one's gonna be for Fort Abraham Lincoln Foundation, located at Paragon Bowl, which is eleven twenty-five West Philard. This would have an effective date of July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2023. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, twenty-one pull tab jar, and pull tab dispensing devices. City Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions from Mr. Dossinger on the Fort Abraham, uh, Lincoln Foundation gaming site at the Paragon? Actually located inside Champs, right? They're gaming, right, okay. No questions, I'd look for a motion?
Mr. President, move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next site up is the DSU Heritage Foundation Site?
That is correct, Mr. President. The next gaming site authorization request is for the DSU Heritage Foundation, located at Bernie's Esquire Club, which is forty-three Sim Street. This would also have an effective date of July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 23. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, twenty-one pull tab jar, pull tab dispensing devices, Calcutta's poker and raffles. City Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger's staff on this gaming site authorization? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move into Item C, we have Administrator Reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city of Dickinson is one of several cities in North Dakota tracking and submitting expenses for the April 12th to April 14th snowstorm to move forward with federal assistance. The city of Dickinson spent approximately $242,000 in that forty-eight hour timeframe. A $1.27 million was established as a state threshold to request federal assistance. The state was short approximately $200,000 for a federal disaster declaration. There will be no FEMA reimbursement to any of the cities of North Dakota for dealing with that snowy event.
Thank you, Ms. Dossinger. Any questions for Ms. Dossinger on the FEMA snow removal, non-reimbursement?
The other update I'd like to provide you is in reference to the Planning Department. Planning Director Walter Hadley has resigned from the city of Dickinson effectively June 3rd. We are currently taking the opportunity to review and evaluate the Planning Department moving forward. The intake and assignment procedure for Mr. Hadley's duties have been established among staff during this evaluation period and will be adjusted as needed.
Any questions for Mr. Dossinger?
Mr. President, members of the Commission, we did receive two thank you notes. First one was from Invitation Hill at Venice School. They did receive tours of city facilities, and also got a chance to meet some of the city commissioners and department heads when we had our retreat. And the second one is from Badlands Ministries. We had helped fund the purchase of an automatic external defibrillator for the Badland Ministries camp. So we did receive two thank you cards in the mail for that.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on his reports? Now we'll move into the Budget Date Discussion. This will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. For the June 28th, which we where we seat the new commissioners as the first meeting after the city election, um, that's according to the North Dakota Sentry Code forty fifteen oh five. We did send out a meeting request, and there was some confliction as far as the date for the budget presentation. So I'd like to offer two options and see where you would like to go with this. One, we would set a date for all thirty departments to be able to present a fifteen-minute presentation of their budget wishes, and this would be a minimum of seven and a half hours. That's what it figures out. So we would actually have to schedule probably a day and a half to work through all that. Option two would be the budget team would work with departments on a three-page PowerPoint. The PowerPoint would be on personnel, operations, and capital. These PowerPoints would include, um, 2022 budget. Where are we at with the twenty-two budget as far as what we had asked for? The second one there would be the twenty-three department wishes, and then the twenty-three recommendation coming from the budget team. So you'd see all three on for all three different areas, all the wishes and everything. These PowerPoints would then be sent out to all commissioners to review and ask specific questions if they would like to reach out to staff or department head. Then on our first work session, which is scheduled for July 19th, which is a commission date, that's from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., we would, um, go over any concerns, questions, or suggestions on any of the department's preliminary budgets, and then for part of the agenda. This way you would have approximately three weeks to review and address any concerns with that. And with that, I'll step back and see if there's any questions concerning the options that you may have, or if you have any other suggestions that you would like to... I know we're getting into the summer months, and this is another year where we have new commissioners going in and out. And with that, we have to push back the budget so that the new commissioners actually have time to be able to review and get up to par with the with the budget. So with that, I'll step back and take any concerns or questions from you.
Commissioners?
So it's option A or B?
Well, if you'd like to, it will take a little while, because you know you'll have some departments that can give a five-minute presentation, because nothing's gonna change, this and that. But then you've got other departments that have got so many departments within their department, that's gonna take a good thirty minutes or so. So in the past, and what has happened before, is it's taken almost a day and a half to go through every department, and there's thirty departments, so you would hear from. So if you'd want to, we, the budget team, which is consists of the executive team, the department heads, and the finance team, we'd put together with the department managers a presentation where you have, where you would be asking, even if they would present, that it would be where we're at now, what's their wishes, and what's the recommendation. And then you still have everything in front of you, and then you still have time to be able to talk to any staff member that you would want as far as what their presentations are, if you have any questions on that, or their department head. But you'd have time on your own to be able to review where things are going on that. So it's...
Now, Linda, we have, we have thirty departments, but we don't have thirty department heads, correct?
Not thirty department heads, that is thirty departments. So you have your supervisors and managers that usually present their own budget.
Well, can the department heads present those instead of the the directors and managers? I mean, sorry, the supervisors and managers?
That's an option. In the past, we have always had their, you know, each department come up with with their own budget, but that is an excellent option. If you want just the nine department heads to be able to do all their departments, that would be an option too.
Well, I'm just, that that might be a third option that kind of streamlines that first one.
Is that what we did two years ago?
No, we had, two years ago, we had every department.
Right.
Had come forward. I mean, all thirty, I believe.
It was before...
Last year, I think we just did...
Right, we just had like an executive session type PowerPoint.
Yeah, we just had the department heads last year.
Right, department heads.
And two years ago, we, Commissioner Frederick's right, we did, uh, everyone, I believe. Everyone.
Yep. So my question, Suzie and John, what was better for you guys as new ones coming on, since someone will be taking my place?
I like the way we did last year. That was streamlined and, you know, I think that, um, that that was a, it sounded like, it seemed like that was a new way of us doing it, but I I do like the way it worked last year. But it also is nice to hear from all the different department heads as well. I mean, I, I'm really kind of mixed and on the fence on this, because it's nice to hear directly from the horse's mouth, but I I also have the opinion that our executive team in those departments that they oversee, they should have a pretty good feel of what those departments' needs are and things like that, and they should be able to speak to those effectively. And I felt like they were able to do that last year, but, um, yeah, I mean, I guess I would lean towards Option C, the the that kind of the hybrid where they present all the departments that they oversee.
I could offer an Option Three and incorporate Commissioner Odom's. If you want to do the PowerPoints, we could do up the PowerPoints on each department, and then the department heads present those three slides. Everybody has the same slides, um, you know, so you'll see where twenty-two was budgeted, where twenty-three wishes are, and then what the recommendation is coming forward to. So you would have that, and then just presented by the department head for all their departments.
Yeah, Linda, I really like the uniformity of that, and I'm a supporter of that. I mean, I think that the more uniform of presentations that we can have with the city, the easier it is for us to follow, but easier it is for the public to follow as well.
And I feel from that first one, that was a lot of, it was a lot of stuff, it was...
Yeah, there was a lot there that having every department in, but is a really a good way to learn, all the departments of the city. And so I I can't say it was my favorite at the time, but now when I look back and think of how much learning that occurred that day, there was a lot of, um, a lot of good stuff. And so, but, um, yeah, if there could be...
Streamlining.
Yeah, yeah, streamlining it a bit too. I think of if there isn't thirty people coming and going, that saves a lot of time in a meeting too, just that there isn't so much transitioning who's presenting. But, um, I'm pretty flexible on that one. I I don't have a strong opinion on which way was better, because it was a lot that first year, but it was a lot of good learning too.
And I would agree with Commissioner Sobeluk on that. There there is a lot of good learning opportunities with the initial way that we did it.
My past has always, my past opinion on it has always been, that's the best way we've ever done it personally, because you get to ask questions, hear everything, you know, compared to where you have one person represent, you know, talking about seven departments, and it just kind of gets skimmed through quickly, and there's questions that they're easily answered. So, I mean, that's my preference, but I mean, I'm willing to try something else.
And after we listen to all those two, making sure we step back and look at the overall picture, you know, like, because it there, it needs to fit into that overall picture too, not just getting pulled into each department when we're with each department, and so then stepping back and and looking at that bigger picture. But hearing, hearing from each isn't, it's not bad. With that...
Well, and real...
Go ahead, John.
And realistically, Linda, I mean, one to four, um, even if you try to schedule that down to like, you know, just as tightly as you possibly can, it's not gonna be possible to get it all done. So I mean, I I really think that everybody on this commission kind of looks at it as, hey, this is gonna be a day-long thing. And, um, the the more loosely that is, it's gotta be scheduled tightly, but the more loosely and open to conversation that that day is scheduled, uh, the better, because it allows us to ask those deeper probing questions that we might have.
And that's what I was going to say, is if we go this way, even if we present the three slides per department, you're looking at a day. You're looking at a day. It's a lot of information.
See, last year seemed like we was ten days for some reason. It was like we had a lot of budget last year. I mean, I think this is my, gonna be my seventh year. I mean, I remember us used to, we used to get through this in like two or three...
When I first...
Two days usually. I mean, we used to get through it fairly quickly.
When I first came out of the commission, it was a three-hour PowerPoint presentation. But, I'll I'll say this, since we've reformed the, we've been able to meet the needs of those departments more accurately, a lot of the things were decided previously, and the PowerPoint was just presented to commission for approval. The, I guess the challenge is, is for the the individuals doing the PowerPoints, that if there are questions that we have, that they have the information available, especially, um, because if it's, well, we'll have to go find out for you. That's when it drags on. Especially when it comes to if there's any manning requests. Or in in the past too, has been equipment, when, you know, either or. Like when we've had to decide, like an department requests like four pieces of equipment, and we basically said, okay, you can have two. And then we made a decision, and then a day later, we hear from that sub-department. Well, that's not really what we wanted.
Well, maybe have the supervisors come in during that time slot too. So then if there's questions, then, that way they're not taking a whole day as well.
Right. They could just come in during that. That's a good suggestion, just to have the leadership within that department be there if we do have that question. Especially if we have to eliminate things, which I have a feeling we're going to have to.
So it sounds like we need to start looking for a date.
I would suggest one full day. And that's why we were looking at the 28th, because we have to do the commission first meeting, and then we were just gonna continue, because that only takes about five minutes or so. And then we were gonna continue on that day for just doing the budget, since you're already here anyway. But it's totally up, we need five commissioners.
Right.
And I don't have a full day to give on the 28th, but there's lots of other days that I would, so I hopefully we can find one that works for everybody. Should we?
I mean, I'm not, I mean, if we want to do it, I'm not opposed to starting early and going long. I'd rather, I mean, I'd rather stay here till eight than come two extra days, personally, but, in my opinion.
I agree.
Maybe everybody's different, but if we, we had to have lunch or a couple breaks in between and stayed here till we were done, I mean, that's would be my preference, but...
If we stay on schedule?
I agree.
You know, that that would be, you know, that will help, if we can really just stay on schedule, instead of knowing that we have that much to accomplish.
So what what, we we know there's a conflict for Commissioner Sobeluk on the 28th. Is there any other time that week that works for individuals?
Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of that week, the 29th, 30th, or 1st worked for me.
1st's not gonna work for me, but 29th, 30th. And now that if we would stick with the 28th, I have a presentation I have to do at 6:00 p.m., so if we'd go long, I'd have to leave.
The 29th, are we talking?
29th works?
29th would work for me.
29th?
Dr. Bear?
This is the lie.
All right, and for those of you that don't know, your next commissioner is sitting, sitting right there, so... So it's the 29th?
29th would be on a Wednesday.
Say staff?
Mr. President, this room would be booked on the 29th and 30th. If it is on the 29th and 30th, the police department...
Is that for?
Civil service hearing.
Could we hold it in the, another conference room?
Could we do it at the LEC or...
Yeah, at the LEC. We've done it there before.
Are you asking if we can hold the commission meeting over there, or the civil service?
No, just the budget workshop for 29th.
Our budget workshop over there.
We've done it, I mean, we've done it before there.
Yeah.
But will we be missing too many players if we have a civil service presentation?
It is, you're you're potentially missing, uh, Mr. Dossinger, Mr. Siani, Ms. Nomenek. Probably not gonna be a very good day.
Okay.
30th?
That's both those days that...
29th and 30th.
Oh, it's both the days, okay.
Right.
And so when the, when when do we have to certify?
The 28th.
We certify on the 28th.
Okay.
We certify on the 28th.
How about...
If we push it into into July, how tight is that for you, Mrs. Carlson?
I mean, the first week of July is gonna be...
Rough.
Rough, because, I mean, there's, with the fourth being on a Monday, a lot of people are gonna be on vacations, and we should even, maybe even be talking about the fifth.
And then the fifth is the commission meeting.
Moving it, you're saying?
Yeah.
Now, that's up to the commissioners, so if you guys wish to.
When does, when do we have to have it done by again?
First meeting in August, I think we need the... The first, uh, but we have to have the revenue levy into the county by August 10th. And so we have that approved on the first commission meeting in August. And we have work session set up from 1:00 to 4:00 on the 19th and the 2nd of August, and then work session on the 15th. And then the 20th is when we do our first and public hearing of our ordinance for the budget, the proposal, and then October 4th is the second and final of the approved budget. So it's fast.
Can everybody be ready by June 22nd or 23rd?
I was just gonna suggest, what about the week before?
We still have the special meeting.
Not the 23rd.
We'll still have the special meeting to certify the election.
We have to do that.
But I'm talking the budget. The budget's...
So you have a commission meeting on the 21st.
Are we gonna...
So...
Or all day at that day?
And the 23rd, I know, would be out.
I mean, we could start, we could do the...
Well, that Monday.
I mean, I guess we could do, make that an all-dayer, till this commission meeting started. And then we might have to go another day though, but... We don't want, wanna make sure Nikki doesn't miss out.
And Dr. Bear can attend, you know?
Yes, he can.
He can attend, even though he won't be sworn until the 28th.
We don't vote on anything those days anyway.
Right.
It's just a...
Nope, it's just presentation.
And it's open to the public, so anybody can attend, so...
Thoughts on the 21st or 22nd? 23rd?
23rd's out. That's court.
Oh, yeah. We don't have to have it here, though.
But the 20th...
I mean, we don't have to have it here.
Yeah, we don't have to have it here.
We could have it at the...
Yeah, but we also have the, you wanna...
We could move the location of the the budget meetings to the Public Safety Center, if that room is available. Uh, we could move the location of the, the budget meetings to the Public Safety Center, if that room is available.
We've done it there in the past, so.
We also have the employee service-
Mr. Dossinger, the Public Safety Center's booked that whole entire week, from eight to four in the afternoon.
Public Works, we've done it at Public Works before.
So, we've done it at Public Works, so, we can do it out there, so. Which, which date would you prefer, the twenty-second, twenty-third?
Either one is fine with me, but.
I'm flexible to either of those dates also.
Mr. Odomin?
Twenty-third's best for me.
That's a Thursday, right? I'm trying to look at my calendar, and I'm confused. Yes, yes, save the twenty-third, yep, that one's open.
Dr. Bear, twenty-third work? All right. Sounds like twenty-third.
Okay.
Wherever we can find a place to sit.
And then we're still, we will. We're still keeping that third Tuesday from one to four, for our follow-up budget session then.
Yes. That July nineteenth work session is still on, because the fact is, we will do, definitely define our revenues and sales tax and everything, that's part of the agenda anyway, but, um, there may be changes that you wanna look into for other budgets, and we can put that on the agenda also.
Okay, thank you.
So, what time are you thinking most start that day?
I'm good at seven-thirty.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
It's whatever the commission wishes. Eight, seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty's fine with me.
Seven, seven-thirty.
Seven, seven-thirty's fine with me.
Works for me.
Seven-thirty, if Rita brings caramel rolls.
Rita.
Contact Alenda Warlock.
I'll bring 'em, John. As my going-away gift.
So, seven-thirty to five, I will book, and we'll go from there. We can get done early, we can get done early.
I guess while we're talking about dates, do, do we wanna look at July fifth? I know I won't be here.
Are you thinking moving it to like the twelfth, and just have back-to-back weeks, twelfth and nineteenth?
I'm, I mean, I'm open to, I mean, that week's gonna be hard, and there's gonna be a lot of people probably on vacation and stuff, but. I mean, the twelfth is fine with me, but I know I'm not gonna be here for sure the sixth, or the fifth.
The fifth.
Yeah, fifth.
So, you're talking the commission meeting?
The actual commission meeting.
Change to the twelfth?
Is that any issue with staff?
I'm not aware of any issues, Mr. President, at this time with that date.
I'm not aware of anything, so, but I will, um, it, I, I mark that down, so we will definitely look into that.
Put any stress on getting back-to-back commission? Cause we'll be the twelfth and the nineteenth, so.
That would be good for me.
Mr. Presidents, I, I think the only thing that might be a concern there would be the, the time it takes for staff to turn around paperwork, get it in, and then also to, um, we've also got planning and zoning kind of in there a little bit, and getting documents ready and to go for the second meeting in, in the month. I don't think there's anything legal that says that we can't, uh, it would just be a matter of making sure that we start those processes right away, to make sure those documents and all of those projects are ready to go.
I'm probably the most flexible one here, so you guys decide what.
I'm okay on a different night. Different night on the week of the fifth or the twelfth, I'm, I'm flexible there, too.
I, I, I would be fine the sixth at a regular time, if that's, I mean, that doesn't bother me any. I just know I won't be back the fifth.
Okay. We just wanna shoot-
Yeah, any of those, any of those July dates work for me.
So, we're gonna shoot for the sixth instead? Okay.
I think that sounds good.
I'm okay with that.
Just to have a Wednesday night instead of a Tuesday night? Okay.
And then one other thing that I need to confirm is the twenty-eighth. For that first meeting, what time would you like to meet to do that?
Oh, June twenty-eighth.
That's when we swear in the, certify.
And then you elect your vice president.
And my, my meetings go at least until one that day, so I could promise to be here by two, even if I ran a little long. So, if we'd wanna do afternoon, or do we wanna do evening?
What time do you start, Commissioner Sobeluk?
What time, do I start in the morning? Like, eight?
Cause our, to certify the vote and everything, I mean, literally, he's gonna take and swear in the two commissioners, is gonna take ten minutes.
Yeah, it usually takes about ten minutes to do everything.
Yeah, we, so we could go at seven-thirty on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I could come down at seven-thirty, cause my meetings are in Dickinson, so, yeah.
I'm fine with that, if everybody else is.
John?
Dr. Bear?
Yep, that works.
Dr. Bear?
Seven-thirty, in the morning?
Twenty-eighth.
On what, what, on the twenty-eighth, is what?
Yeah, that's the day we have to certify the vote, so.
Okay.
That's like, at what time, seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty, yes.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. We'll move to our timetable. First item up this evening is public hearing for utility easement vacation for State Sedition. Consideration to approve the first reading of ordinance. Let me grab this here, seventeen fifty-three? This will be handled by our In Arm City Engineer, Marshick, welcome.
President Decker, commissioners, included in your packet, and I don't know if I T. will be able to find it, but there is a slide with a map of this location. We have a petition for vacation of a six-foot utility easement along lots five and six, block twenty-five of State Edition. So, as I said, there's a map of that included in your packet. All affected utilities have signed off on that, and there's an attached petition. The city staff recommends approval of this vacation application. Do you have any questions for me? Oh, they found it, it's up here on the screen.
Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Marshick?
Hearing no questions, this is a, a public hearing. So, I will open up the public hearing and public comments section. If you wish to ask any questions about this utility easement vacation, please come forward, state your name. If you're watching online, you may call in at seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six, and ask any questions of the commission or staff about this vacation. Anyone with any concerns? Any concerns? Seeing no one has any concerns about the utility easement vacation, I would ask commissioners, do you have any questions of city staff on this utility easement? Now, I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the utility easement by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Odomin?
Aye.
Sure votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item up is we have a presentation from the Dickinson Public Library, and this will be presented by Library Director Ennin and Bartlett and West representatives, I think are in the audience, right?
Yep.
Okay, welcome.
Yep, thank you, President and Commissioners. Um, we have a, just a little video that we're gonna start with. I think you've seen a lot about the project, but this is maybe a different look at it. So, I said, as I said, most of you have seen that in some parts and pieces before, but that's, uh, one of the things that we've created that, um, will help with our fundraising as we're going forward. I do wanna just share some, um, very recent statistics with you. So, comparing the week of Memorial Day this year to last year, we are up two hundred and fifty-two people through the front doors. Also, our first week of summer reading, um, our teens have already logged twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight minutes of reading. The children, that's six to twelve, forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty minutes of reading. And our early literacy kids have completed one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven learning activities. So, uh, just to let you know what's happening over there, uh, not that that's really news to you, but this is what's been in the process and growing, and we want to keep that momentum going. I did want to also say, we've had some first conversations with the group that's looking at art and, and science facility. Um, I've met with Alicia from the Chamber on behalf of them, and so, we are working on a variety of partnerships. Uh, Linda was with me also over to Stark County this morning. Um, they've had our request and are looking at how that fits in their overall budget. Um, Joe is with me today, he's done a little bit of looking at updating some of those figures that you had.
Thank you, Rita.
Chairman and Commissioners, I, um, our activity, um, up to this point has been to try to get the project moving again. It's been about a little over a year, uh, since the last estimate. We, we took at, we actually got estimates from two local contractors. We updated those estimates based on their input, and, um, over the last year, slightly over a year, with all of the price increases and volatility, um, in the market, we would recommend that we look at somewhere around a twenty percent increase to the estimates, um, to be as accurate as we can if the project was to move forward and, in the next, um, well, hard to say when, but, um, we expect that the, the market will stay somewhat stable for, for a little while, so.
So, we do have someone here to speak to, um, the USDA loan too, but first, are there any questions you would have for us that we might be able to answer for you?
Well, bo- both the estimates we have are twenty-twenty estimates-
Correct.
-in our packet.
Right, and those are the estimates that were just updated, that's what he's telling you, the update would be about twenty percent.
About twenty percent.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're, they're pretty far apart. I mean, if, if you-
Oh, between the two.
Yes, between the two.
Yes, President.
I mean, you're, you're, you're talking twelve million to eighteen million, or nineteen million. Yeah.
I mean, if you go to the bottom, it's fifteen million with contingency and everything, but.
That's what I mean, it's about eighteen million, yeah, nineteen. So, but the other one's twelve million. So, I mean, there's, it's a pretty wild swing, so, I don't know if-
And that cost would also be for the full project, correct?
It's for the full construction cost of the project.
So, maybe you just touch on the phasing again, how you're looking at doing it here.
Sure, so, we designed the project to be bid in two separate phases, um, with the first phase initially comprising most of the addition. There are some smaller additions that take place back on the existing building, but the bulk of the addition would be in phase one, we, we have to do that so that we can get that built with the least disruption to the operation of the facility, and then move people over into it as we remodel in phase two. Costs for, between phase one and phase two are roughly fifty-fifty. Uh, a little bit more for, for phase one, because of some infrastructure things that we need to do. So, you know, if we are looking at the, the lower estimate, we're, we're still around that six, six and a half, um, million for phase one.
Would you like to hear from Abby?
Sure, sure.
And be, as I, I wanna introduce Abby, she's the, works for A E two S Nexus, and she's the funding program specialist, and she's going to do a lot better job than I did in explaining the USDA loan, and how it operates through the city, and what we can and can't do. And so, I'm hoping with that, we can get some direction on where we're gonna go with the, with the loan. Abby?
Right, so, um, we, when I initially talked with Linda and Rita, we evaluated what funding options were available for a library expansion project. There aren't a lot out there, um, as far as below-market interest rates, USDA's Community Facilities Loan and Grant Program is gonna be the best fit for this project. That has terms of up to forty years, right now, interest rates are at two point one two five percent, which, if you know market rates at all, that's very good. Why, why now, why we should look at applying now is, um, those terms are upgrade, they're updated every quarter. And so, once we get to July one, and then September one, those interest rates likely will go up as market rates continue to go up. And so, the sooner we can apply and, um, lock in those terms, the lower the interest rate likely will be for this project. Another thing to keep in mind is that it's USDA rural development, and this program is limited to communities of, uh, twenty thousand or less with, of population. USDA is still using twenty-ten census data, and so, at this point, Dickinson qualifies as a rural community. When they eventually update to twenty-twenty census data, or whatever they end up using, um, Dickinson likely will not qualify for the, the program anymore. And so, um, at this point, we are asking for permission to apply for the gro- for the loan program, um, secure USDA terms where they're sitting right now, that would give the city up to five years to, you know, decide whether or not they wanna move forward with the project. Um, you can walk away with no penalty, it's, it's just to get kinda that financial framework in place so that, um, the library can start having more conversations, uh, on potential partnerships.
What, um, it's, um, excuse me, Abby, you right?
Yes.
Ab- what was your last name, Abby?
Ritz.
Just for the public record.
Sure.
I'm just doing some figuring right here, how much are we looking to apply for? Full amount? But we really haven't determined-
The five million dollars, if we can, I, I would like to have her apply for the full amount. It still has to go through underwriting and everything else, just like any type loan, but we've gotta start with the feasibility studies and things like that, so, if we can lock it in, like she said, we have five years to decide where we wanna go, but if we can lock in at a low interest rate and get the work done, paperwork and things, that's where we need that decision from the commission, because you are the governing body that has to support it.
And you would be the sponsor for the, the loan, correct? And you would be the sponsor for the, the loan, correct?
So when we say full amount, the full amount allowable by USDA, or the full amount of the-
It's 5 million.
So 5 million?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you clarify for me, Rita? I, I know we talked about phasing the project. Did we decide on two phases rather than three?
It could be done in three.
Okay.
It could, I would see potentially be done in like three and a half.
Okay, okay. So, so when we initially discussed, before, we had updated costs, you know, when we were looking at 15 million total, we talked about phasing it across in three phases. That way, we could stay below a $5 million threshold, and the loan could be processed at the state level. Once you go above a $5 million threshold, it has to be moved up to the national office, and obviously, federal government, it takes a little bit more time and a little bit more paperwork. So I think this initial application, we'd be looking at $5 million. And that would be, I think, kind of the needs portion of the project, and then we can reevaluate after that first phase had been completed.
I have a clarifying question, kind of, I'm, I'm going to restate what I think I heard, and then I'd like you to see if I was understanding this right. So, we can apply for it, but that doesn't mean we have to take out any of the money.
Correct.
And if we don't take out the money, then we don't get any penalties or anything.
Correct.
So, but if we don't, and then we're eligible for up to the 5 million if they approve us.
Yes.
But if we don't apply for it before July 1st, then we lose eligibility likely because they might change the census data on us.
July 1st is, so July 1st is the date that they will update the loan interest rates. You know, the interest rates get updated every quarter. They've been using the 2010 data since I started this job four years ago. We, we don't really know when they're planning to update. It could be within the next year, it could be two years down the line. They could update it in a couple months, we don't quite know.
But the, what, the part that I was most interested in is, we can apply for it, but we don't necessarily have to take out that money. We can wait to work with the counties or other people too who are asking us, well, how can we make this payment plan better so that we can donate? So that, this isn't something that, if we approve this as a commission, that doesn't mean we are going to take all 5 million out if we don't have somebody else willing to help us to pay that back.
Exactly, yep, yep. You would apply, kind of state, you know, worst-case scenario, if the city is applying for the whole loan, we're backing it, here's how we would fund it. They will, they'll approve your loan application. You'll be, you'll receive a letter of conditions, which gives you your interest rate terms, all of that information. And then, at that point, you would kind of finish your underwriting if you decided to move forward. Your bond counsel would drop all the bond documents for the city commission to approve, but once you receive your letter of approval from USDA, you can move forward, you can take a step back, there are no penalties, there's no requirement that you draw any money on that loan.
Okay.
Yep, so it would be just getting that financing set in place.
Thank you.
I personally don't have an issue of authorizing them. What I, I would like to see, though, is an, an accurate estimate, and let's not be guessing that it might be 20% increase on construction costs.
So the trouble with that is, it depends on what you mean by an accurate estimate, because you don't want to send something to bid, which is the place at which you're going to get a really accurate estimate, if we're not ready to move forward. That, that's the one concern there is about that.
I mean, you'd have a little expense of preparing the bid docs and everything. Spec book.
Well, both these firms gave us estimates before. Could they not update, update that?
Yes, Commissioner, they, they certainly can do that. I was asked to take a look at updating the estimates less than a week ago.
Okay.
So we can, with a little more time, we can certainly get more accurate.
Yeah, but I, I think we can, unless Commissioners, you have an objection to applying for this, I think we should.
I'd make a motion if we need it.
I mean, it's a great, it's a great rate, and so, yeah, I guess we could, yeah, a motion to authorize them to apply.
Okay, I'd so move.
So a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up, we have the Airport Board, request for compensation. We have a representative here.
Mr. President, Commissioners, it was my understanding that Mr. Kelly Braun was going to be in attendance tonight to speak on behalf of the Airport Authority. I'll just fill you in as best I can here, based on the information that I have. Included in your packet is a memorandum outlining the request from the Airport Authority with regard to their request for compensation. Essentially, they are asking this board to adopt a resolution that would allow their board to compensate their members for meetings and such. I've outlined a brief understanding and visiting with Attorney Randy Sickler, who represents the Airport Board, what they were asking for as far as compensation, and also what other boards within the other, city affiliated boards also get paid for their time serving and meeting other needs of this community. So my understanding is that they were going to be requesting that compensation, and the question was whether you wanted to entertain that idea, and if so, what you'd be willing to set that compensation rate at based on what other boards are being paid. If that is the case, the city would draft a resolution to that effect if you decide to move forward with that request. I would have any answers to any questions.
So they, they would pay it out of their budget, or?
That is my understanding. The, the city, obviously, I believe, has a hand in their budget. The city also appoints their members to their board, but my, my understanding and visiting with Attorney Sickler is that you would be authorizing the board to be able to pay their members, but those monies would come out of their coffers and not the city. That's my understanding.
But currently, we don't appoint their board.
Oh, I, I thought they, you did, I might be mistaken on that.
No.
Century Code-
They choose their own board members.
Yep.
Only we have one Commissioner on the board.
Yep.
So I would say that if, you know, we do give them the opportunity to compensate, that we probably should appoint, have that authority.
Well, I don't know that it matters if it's coming out of their budget, but-
And we would, Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. President, we would have to make sure there aren't any statutory requirements as far as who can appoint members to the board, so that would be something that we would have to look at before we could entertain that idea.
I mean, so just some back history, I mean, we, as a commission, at some point authorized them to-
Correct.
To have an Airport Authority Board?
At some point along the line, based on the information that was provided to me by, by Mr. Sickler, the City of Dickinson Commission adopted by resolution the Dickinson Airport Authority, and in that adoption of that resolution, dealt with the appointment and qualification of its commissioners. So statute by Century Code does provide that you are the adopting authority that created that, so you have some authority in determining compensation and so forth.
I don't, I don't have an issue with the amount they're requesting either. I think we, we also need to look at our other boards.
I was just going to say that. I think for the time involved with some of these other boards, $20 a-
Right.
A meeting is-
We, we're way past overdue, looking at what we compensate people-
I don't know when that, I don't know when that was looked at last, but I mean, I mean, some of these meetings last two, three hours for 20 bucks, and-
And they're taking time.
Well, and, and just, just to add to additional color here, the Airport Board, those members sometimes attend meetings out of, out of city and things like that. I mean, there, there's a lot of time that's involved with this particular board, and yeah, I, I would support us supporting this.
No, I, I agree, that they're a very busy board, but so are our other boards. Like, we have Planning and Zoning Board that goes two, three hours sometimes. We have other boards.
Well, I just look at like a two-day civil service hearing that they're talking about, and it's two days, so they might get $40 though, but-
Right.
I don't know, would they get 40? Probably not.
Because it's a continuous meeting.
I don't know.
It's a little bit more than jury duty.
We, we need to look at, we, we need to look at that.
Said it's a little bit more than jury duty.
Good point.
What is jury duty?
I thought it was 25.
25. Okay, 25 a day.
Yes.
Well, I think we just, we just need to look at our, our whole scale.
Yeah, that's where this was leading me to. I was thinking that we need to look at the rest also.
But, no, I, I don't have any issue authorizing them. I, I do think, though, we need to look into how the, the board is appointed.
Sure.
Because when I was on the Airport Board, they self-appointed, they made the determination out there who they put on the board.
And we don't approve that, or, like, it just doesn't come across us to approve at a meeting?
I think it came, I think it came back to us as, to approve after they appointed them.
Well, I mean, is it set up similar to Parks and Rec? Because, well, I guess their boards-
Elected.
They're elected, though, so it's a little difference.
Yeah, they're elected, so. I, I guess, you know, Attorney Winko, just look into the authority and-
Yes, well, what we can do, I'm, I'm hearing a general consensus to move forward with this, so we will draft a resolution to allow that request for compensation, and then when we bring it back, we can give you a little bit more information on these appointments and go from there.
All right, thank you. Our next public hearing is a Chapter 39 Amendment for Heavy and Commercial Vehicles. This is consideration to approve the first reading of ordinance, this would be 1754, because we use 1753 on the vacation. So this should be 1754, and this will be handled by Building Inspector DuKart.
President Decker and Commissioners, I'm here speaking for the Building and Codes Department in reference to the Chapter 39 Amendments, which include revisions of the definitions specifically commercial and heavy vehicles and personal vehicles, and which zoned areas these vehicles are allowed in. Our department worked with Commissioners of Planning and Zoning, along with City Attorney Winko, to implement verbiage that helps clarify the intent of the municipal code for the residents of Dickinson. The intent was always there, but the verbiage left too much room for interpretation. These revisions will help with, drastically with code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. DuKart. Any questions from Mr. DuKart or staff on this Chapter 39 Amendment, Ordinance 1754? Hearing no questions from the Commissioners, we'll go to the public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments on this Chapter 39 Amendment, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns. If you're watching online, you may call in at 701-456-7006. Anyone have any concerns on the Chapter 39 Amendment? Anyone with any concerns? Hearing no concerns, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions for city staff? Hearing no questions, I look for a motion on Ordinance 1754.
I'd move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Odomin.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next public hearing, we're a little bit ahead of that. We're a little bit behind here. That's at 5:40, so we have about six minutes. Let me go back to the regular agenda here. Mrs. Winko, handle that Chapter 7 Amendment in five minutes.
You bet I can, Mr. President. Enclosed in your packet is Ordinance 1752. This is a second reading of that proposed ordinance, and the purpose and intent behind that ordinance is to update the existing code penalties as it relates to the Building Code and enforcement. These changes are simply to bring the code in compliance and be consistent with the North Dakota Century Code as far as penalties are required. We had passed the first reading with no issues or comments or concerns, and we would just recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for Mrs. Winko on the Chapter 7 Amendment?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1752.
We have a motion to approve 1752 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Odomin.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Nomenek, you have a job description for us, Community Development Director, Engineer Position.
You have one minute.
Thank you, President.
She's got, she's got, you got four minutes, so she's putting you on a tight clock.
This might be, we'll see. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So we were tasked with coming forward with a new job description for the City Engineer and combining a Community Development Director position somewhat. So interim Chief Dossinger and myself have been working on this job description, and what this position would be is, under the direction of the City Administrator, this position would be responsible for city's development, building and infrastructure expansion duties, and overseeing the city's engineering, buildings and codes, and planning departments. This position provides expert advice, strategic planning, and problem-solving for complex city matters, including but not limited to capital improvement planning, North Dakota DOT urban roads programming, comprehensive planning, municipal infrastructure construction standards, site planning, trail development, urban forestry planning, GIS, or the Geographic Information System, budgeting and forecasting, permitting, environmental regulatory compliance, and legislative presentation and media outreach. So basically overseeing that engineering, buildings and codes planning department. City staff is looking for any questions or concerns you might have, and looking for approval on this position.
Commissioners, any questions for city staff?
I mean, I talked to Administrator Dossinger earlier today on this. I mean, is it, is this a common, are we going to find somebody with this experience that's an engineer, that is also a planning person, and, I mean, is, I mean, it just seems there's, is there going to be a skill set here that doesn't seem like it's going to be?
I mean, we never know until we try. I don't know that, in my opinion, and I guess everyone else can, can speak for themselves, but I don't know that they need to be a planner, they just need to oversee the departments and make sure they're working collaboratively for the common goal of that development department. You know, unless we don't hire a planner, I don't know what the plan is for that position, but ultimately, it would be a City Engineer position overseeing those departments and, and making sure everything is working together in the capital improvements, and those sort of things are directed through one department and one person.
I agree with Mrs. Nomenek. I think we float the job and see what's, what's out there, and then we'll make our decision on planning and zoning, depending on the skill set that we get.
Mr. President, this position is really, you know, designed to bring some cohesiveness between the Planning Department, Engineering, and then Building and Officials Department moving forward. I think there's room for improvement, you know. Obviously, it could be challenging filling this position, but I agree with Mrs. Nomenek, until we try to, we advertise the position, see we get back, I think it's definitely worth a try moving forward.
And this is going to, you know, possibly be one of those positions, much like Mr. Kubis, that we have a certain individual with a unique skill set and, you know, fits- you know, fits into the role, and we'll go from there.
One thing we did not decide on, um, Chief Dossinger, interim Dossinger and I had talked about this, is what grade level it should be, um, placed in, because as you, yourself mayor, said in a prior meeting, that it may be difficult to find someone, um, depending on what grade level we're putting it in, so, you know, grade twenty-three, the top end would be one sixty-one, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, the grade twenty-four, um, top end would be a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
I'm not opposed to having this individual under contract like the city administrator.
I guess I'd-
When you say that, then they would still report to the city administrator, not to us, though?
Right, yes.
And then help me with one more question there. Then it's not a graded position, so it's set based on experience and?
And by us.
Okay.
This is gonna take a, a, a unique person to fill this, so-
I mean, to have, I mean, experience in all of those fields, I'm not, just not sure that, that person exists, but I mean, maybe there is somebody out there. I mean, building and codes, engineering, planning.
But I think what Mrs. Nomenek described too is just a really communicator and a collaborator, that can bring that together, that they have that engineering knowledge, but the communication ability and the collaboration to tie that all together. Um, even some of the community ser- or not community, customer service too, to, to be working with the people that-
More of a leadership.
Mm-hmm. And so, I think the engineering is probably the, the really required skillset, the other ones are, they can come with-
I mean, yeah, being in this community a long time, I ju- I just remember back before, a long time ago. I mean, there was a city engineer that handled the development of, he was just a city engineer. I mean, you didn't have a planning department.
So why can't this be that?
So it almost would be like what we've had in the past, is what you're saying, Jason?
When you brought in a raw, yeah, I mean, when you brought in a raw piece of land to develop, you worked with the engineering department. When you brought, were buying an existing structure that you wanted to repurpose to something else, you worked with the building department. I mean, it's just, we, we never had planning until the oil boom that I read. I mean, I think Mr. Corton was our first plan, official city planner, I don't know when he was, came on, but. It just seemed like, I mean, it was always, and you, you knew where you, you went, right? Like, right now, the way we do it, it goes, it's all over the place, so. I mean, I think the reevaluation that Ch- Mr. Dossinger's talking about needs to really be looked at, because, I mean, nobody really knows where to start at some time, you know, when they come in right now, and, and you know how well I've logged the checklist over the past years, so.
I think they're working on that, so. So what's your suggestion? You don't want this at all?
No, I, I think we need an engineer. I, I just, I think we're gonna, I mean, if you, to think this engineer wants to manage the department, probably, I just don't know you're gonna find a skillset that knows all those departments, planning and-
We don't get the right person, we don't hire him.
Yeah, I, I, I just think-
We're, we're not obligated to hire anybody.
I just think we're trying to put a lot of stuff into one job position, but that's miss, my opinion on it, but. Maybe that person exists.
Okay. As far as grade, what's your recommendation, Miss Nomenek?
You know, I, I feel like, you know, um, city engineer Kubis was on the top end of a grade twenty-three. There wasn't much more room, you know, for that position to go, so, and that was how many years ago, you know? So, maybe a twenty-four is where we need to be. And I did look, just in one of the programs that I have at work where we can check wages, I did put that in, and the median was around the one sixty to five to one seventy-seven for a position like this.
Yeah. I mean, in, in the past, all the contractor positions have reported directly to us. I mean, that's, would be the attorney, I mean, I mean, it just doesn't, I don't know if it fits in a contractor position either, so. I mean, maybe we have to put it at a twenty-four and see what happens. I mean-
I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to that. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I think, I, I think putting it out there, this is a, kind of been limbo for a while. Um, it's, it's, it's nice to see some movement, and we need to, I mean, we gotta move on this, because this is gonna be something that, um, is gonna be desperately needed, especially with the, the new city administrator and things like that coming on. Um, we need to really focus on development in the city, and with Mr. Hadley leaving as the city planner, um, we, we can't put that all on the feet of, uh, the city administrator, and they're gonna need some assistance there, and, uh, I, I like the idea of putting this out there. Maybe we don't get any applicants that actually, um, meet the requirements of what we're looking for, and then we break it up somewhere down the line, but, maybe you find that diamond in the rough that's sitting out there that, uh, is, is interested in this, doing engineering work, but also community development work, so. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Frederick. I, I think that we're, we might be looking for a unicorn, but maybe a unicorn will exist out there. I know my daughter believes in him.
Okay. I'd look for a motion, uh, so that we advertise this position or not advertise it.
Do we need to approve the job description? Are there any of that?
Yeah, approve the job description so they can-
Okay, so approve the job description, grade twenty-four, and start advertising for it?
Right, yes.
For those three?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sobeluk, second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the timetable. And we have public hearing for future land use map amendment, the district addition. And this is, well, will be handled by City Attorney Winko, and this should be ordinance seventeen fifty-five.
Correct. Uh, Mr. President, Commissioners in front of you, you have an ordinance, uh, that would be identified as seventeen fifty-five, that would amend the future land use map. Uh, it is for a twenty point eight-five acre parcel, uh, to be known as the district. Uh, according to this amendment, we would be, uh, changing the future land use designation from agricultural to commercial. Uh, this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and to my knowledge, there were no adverse comments or objections. Uh, city staff would recommend approval, and I believe the representative for, um, the district, uh, with Highlands Engineering, Andrew Schenk is here, in case you have any questions for their representative.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for city staff on this future land use map amendment, which is ordinance seventeen fifty-five? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone has any concerns or questions about the future land use map amendment, please come forward, state your name. Let us know your concerns or questions. If you're watching online, seven zero one four five six seven zero zero six. Again, if anyone has any concerns, questions, or comments about the future land use map amendment, ordinance seventeen fifty-five, please come forward. Anyone have any concerns? Hearing no one has any concerns, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Winko or staff or the applicant who is in the audience? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on seventeen fifty-five.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move into, our next is a public hearing for rezoning request for the district addition. This will be ordinance seventeen fifty-six. This will be handled by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, included in your packet is an ordinance that would amend the district zoning map and reclassify designated lots for tracts of land located within the city of Dickinson's jurisdiction. Uh, this one is specifically for the district addition. Uh, as you just approved the future land use amendment, this, uh, second ordinance would then adjust and amend the zoning designation for that twenty point eight acre parcel. Uh, we would be amending from agricultural to community commercial. Uh, this also was approved and passed by the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission. Again, no, uh, to my knowledge, there were no objections or adverse comments. City staff would recommend approval, and I also, again, um, the representative for the developers in the audience, in the event that you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. Any questions for city staff on this rezone? There are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. This is a rezone for the area known as the district. If you have any concerns, come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns or any comments. If you're watching online, seven zero one four five six seven zero zero six. Again, anyone have any concerns or comments? Any comments? Does anyone have any concerns? Seeing in here, no one has any comments or concerns on this rezone. This is ordinance seventeen fifty-six. Commissioners, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. I'm gonna give that one to John, he's on delay, so Commissioner Otterman, you have the second. There you go. You're gonna have to talk to somebody about that latency at your house. Any further comments or questions on seventeen fifty-six? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Alright, we have five minutes till the next public hearing, so we will go back to, we have an abatement. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Uh, we have the rare residential abatement before us, even rarer still is one that we're not contesting, so our recommendation from staff will be to accept. Uh, but I have with me, uh, Heather Davis, who's with my department. She knows most about this property, so I'll let her fill you in on the details.
Hello, President Decker and Commissioners. Um, my name again is Heather Davis. I'm property praiser for the city of Dickinson. I'm here to ask for your support for the abatement of seventeen seventy-four Third Avenue East. The property owners are abating their twenty twenty-one property taxes due to a higher valuation from the basement finish that was going to be completed, but was not completed due to high material costs. The assessing office did remove the basement finish, but that would not show until the following year. Staff recommends to approve that the property owner's twenty twenty-one true and full value be corrected to the twenty twenty true and full value of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollars due to the basement not being completed.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Was there a permit? Is that why we assume the basement was given?
Yeah, the, these property owners bought their home February first, and so the previous owners took a permit out, and then it expired.
Understand, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So ci- city staff's recommendation is change the value to the owner request of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred. So I would look for a motion, Commissioners?
Mr. President, I'd move to accept the city staff's recommendation of, um, changing the value of the owner's request.
So we have a motion to approve the owner's request of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Furman. I don't think you can get done in four minutes, can you?
Give it a shot, sir.
Alright.
Mr. President, Commissioners, tonight I come-
You're on the clock, go.
Uh, tonight I am here along with Kurt Glasso from the North Dakota Society of Professional Land Surveyors. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, there was a presentation on work in Prairie Outpost Park, and what was, uh, included in that was a proposal from the North Dakota Society of Professional Surveyors to place a state line monument marker in Prairie Outpost Park. In your packet is a letter from the president of the Bandlands Chapter of that organization, uh, to Mayor Decker, basically requesting permission to proceed with that project. Uh, city staff, and my person suggests that we go ahead.
I, I personally think this is a really, it's a cool, cool project, so, I, I, we need more stuff like this. I mean, just tie us to our history, and, no, I think this is, I am so glad you guys found this and brought this forward. I think it's a, it's a great addition to the, the park, and, so, thank you so much.
Well, we're really excited about it, and I hope Rita puts it in, that in the minutes, that it was a cool project. So we will proceed then. Thank you very much.
Alright. Um, I'd, I'd look for a motion to give them approval.
I'll move to approve.
Alright, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll move back to the timetable, and our last, or second to last, is our Fifteenth Street West Cost Share, the district addition. Uh, this will be handled by interim city administrator Dossinger and Mr. Schenk, who's in the audience, so. Mr. Dossinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Uh, this evening, we have Mr. Andrew Schenk from Highlands Engineering with us, who is representing Venture Homes. Uh, his presentation will consist of a cost share request from the city of Dickinson, a portion of Fifteenth Street West, which is part of the, the district addition development. Uh, Mr. Schenk?
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger, uh, Commissioners. Andrew Schenk with Highlands Engineering, uh, here today on behalf of the applicant, uh, Venture Commercial. Uh, with me as well is Chad Glazer and Aaron Grinsteiner with Venture Commercial. Uh, what we're here to present today is a cost share for the development that you guys just approved, the flume and the rezone amendment for the district addition, which is a six lot commercial development that's proposed along Fifteenth Street, just west of State Avenue. commercial development that's proposed along 15th Street, just west of State Avenue. The cost share we're requesting is for some infrastructure, public infrastructure, being the Collector Roadway, which is 15th Street West. So you guys know, there's different classifications of roadways. Collectors fall between local roadways and arterial roadways. They serve the subdivision, but they also serve the community, provide the flow you need for traffic and pedestrians through your community. We're also asking for a cost share of the Storm and Sanitary Sewer. As part of this development, we're being required to extend that infrastructure all the way to the western property line within 15th Street West. We would really only need to go about halfway through this development to serve our development, so that's really to serve future development to the west and help spur growth in that area. A little bit of a history on this cost share. Back in 2019, we did a master plan. If it's okay, we've got a copy of that, we can hand out for you guys, so you can see what that master plan for this whole area looked like, if you want to hand that out during... That was back in 2019, and during that time, there's a lot of talk about 15th Street West and the connectivity from 30th Street all the way over to State Avenue. There's a lot of discussion about the city actually funding that road in full. Those discussions kind of went back and forth over the last couple of years. They started again late last year, as Venture Commercial started looking at developing this 20 acre parcel. At last year's December 7th commission meeting, there was actually a discussion presented by Engineer Marcik about building this road. She also presented some cost share options for developments and undeveloped roads within the city. So this policy that we're presenting today is somewhat based on the policy that Ms. Marcik had, it's something I've been pushing the city for, for the last several years, to establish a policy for cost share on public infrastructure. The current unwritten policy that the city has is that the developer should pay for all infrastructure. There are times when the city will participate in upsizing of water sewer mains, it's usually only up participation that there is, based on the unwritten policy. This current policy requires each development to come in and negotiate cost shares for each individual development. This can take a lot of staff time to prepare and negotiate these agreements. It causes inconsistency in funding from the city for developments, or at least the appearance of inconsistency for developers. It also increases risk for developers. If they don't know their input costs upfront, and what participation level is going to be there from the city, it can really just stop development upfront because they don't know their input costs. So the request that we're making today is for a 50/50 cost share of the improvements that we discussed, the Collector Roadway, the Storm Sewer, and the Sanitary Sewer. This is similar to one of the policies that Ms. Marcik had presented, and although I know this is a civic request today, we know it's just for this development today, we'd really encourage you guys to look at your policy for all infrastructure. With that, I think Mr. Grinsteiner and Mr. Glaser have a little bit to add about the specific costs and some of the benefits that you could see as the city level as well for this development.
They're here to present the best case scenario, right?
We'll give you both.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Chad Glaser with Venture Commercial. Thank you for considering contributing to the public infrastructure improvement of 15th Street West. We are here tonight to request a contribution of $450,000 in the form of a development impact fee. This $450,000 amount came from the average of the best and worst-case scenario cost estimates. These two estimates should be included in your meeting packet. The worst-case scenario came in right at a million dollars. This estimate was done by Highlands Engineering. We took the Highlands Engineering item quantities to contractors here in town for some current pricing to use on the best-case scenario cost estimate. That total came to a little over $810,000. We understand costs will more than likely increase, but we agree to assume all risk for cost overruns. Any questions on those two cost estimates?
No.
In addition to the reasons Andrew just listed, this $450,000 contribution is a good investment for the city, because the district will spur future development. As you all know, Dickinson Public Schools owns 114 acres on the west side of the District Edition. Even if Dickinson Public Schools builds a new school on their 114 acre parcel, additional land will be available for residential development. The remaining DPS land is the best raw land in the city of Dickinson for single-family homes. As the crow flies, the DPS land and the district are both less than a mile from the Dickinson Middle School, Dickinson High School, Trinity High School, and the West River Community Center. As a residential home builder here in Dickinson, we are aware that inventory of good buildable residential lots within the city is dwindling quickly. Depending on activity, we could be out of lots within three years. That would stunt growth in a hurry. It goes without saying, but new and exciting development is critical for the future and growth of our city, and this is one of the best locations for new commercial development and subsequent residential development in our city. Our company has completed three developments in the last three years, all three, the Market Edition, Riverfront Estates, and the Acres. All saw vertical construction shortly after final approval. The district will be no different. Lastly, this property currently generates $1,177.83 annually in property tax. Using conservative estimates, we project the District Edition to generate a total of over $400,000 in property taxes from 2022 through 2026. And Aaron can provide a little more detailed information on those projections.
President and Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. If you refer to the third attachment that we included in your commissioner packet, we'll just give you kind of a brief summary of some assumptions that we're making in our property tax projections. And then if you turn over Andrew's master plan that he gave you, there's a site plan with lots labeled lot and block numbers. So I'll just kind of run you quickly through each of the lots, what we have envisioned for these lots, and when we think that we might build that. And then for our assumptions here, on buildable commercial land, we're assuming assessed value of $4 a square foot. This comes directly from Mr. Hirschfeld. And then any land, so that is once construction has started on that land, it's assessed at $4 a square foot. Any land, any commercial lots that are vacant, there's a 50% obsolescence for that lot during years when there's no structure started on it. So any vacant land within the District Edition, we're assuming $2 a square foot. Once we're projecting a building to be constructed, we're going to increase that assessed value in the land to $4 a square foot. So, starting on Lot 1, Block 1, which is 4.59 acre lot, just north of 15th Street West, there, we have a financial institution who has currently signed a purchase agreement to purchase this lot from us in the near future, and their intention is to commence construction on their new building in early 2023, probably first quarter, first or early second quarter 2023. Their intention is to build a, between a 12 and 14,000 square foot building, and so my assumption here, or our assumption here, is that this building, the improvements are going to be assessed at about $3 million. This is using, we use Cornerstone Bank, the newer Cornerstone Bank as a metric here, they're about 7,700 square feet, and they were assessed at 1.6 million for their improvement, so close to double, assuming, close to double the size, assuming close to double the assessed value on the structure there. Directly west of that lot would be Lot 2, Block 1. Here, we intend to, as Chad mentioned, our developments have seen vertical construction shortly after they've been approved by the city. And on this lot, we intend to build commercial office condos, similar to what we've built up in the Market Edition, that are currently occupied by businesses like Simeon Family Chiropractic, Thrive It Financial, Hold It Orthodontics. That would be the product that we have envisioned for Lot 2. And our assumption here is fairly conservative, we're not going to start building on that lot right away. We're assuming we build one 5,000 square foot building on that lot in 2024, and then a second 5,000 square foot building on that lot in 2026, okay? So if you follow along the table that's in your packet, you'll see, we have a brief description of, you know, what is on that lot in that year, 2022 through 2026, and then the value of the land and the value of the improvements as well. Going north of the financial institution lot would be Lot 3, Block 1. So we're assuming this is a for-sale lot, however, we do have a business that has shown strong interest in this lot, nothing committed, no purchase agreement signed, unlike the financial institution, but... So our assumption here is that if they move forward, they would want to build a 9,000 to 10,000 square foot building, beginning in 2023, with completion in 2023. So then we would, the city could assess value to that in late 2023. And as far as the improvement assessed value, again, use something similar to what we used on the bank assessed value for the 9,000 to 10,000 square feet, okay? On Lot 4, Block 1, which is west of Lot 3, we assume a shop condo community there, similar to what we built in the last few years, directly north of Menards, where our current office is located. We intend to build 25 to 35 shop condos, depending on the size of these units. So this will be a mix of small businesses, from a small contractor to potentially a mechanic, to even just a personal shop for someone. And this will be a phased build, so we assume we build five units in '23, five units in '24, five units in '25, and five units in '26. Our assessed value for the improvements here is derived from existing assessed values on the shop condos we've already built up by Menards, which are assessed right around $70 a square foot there, okay? And then Lot 5, Lot 5, Block 1, which is on the corner of State Avenue and 19th Street West, we assume that this is just a lot for sale, that we have no suitor for, and it sits vacant for the entire five years. So a pretty conservative estimate on this lot, because we do think it, as the District Edition fills in, this could become a fairly desirable lot, that would suit multiple businesses in that area. And then lastly, Lot 1, Block 2, which is south of 15th Street West, same assumption here, so just a commercial lot for sale, and to be conservative within our property tax projections, we assume that this lot sits vacant for our entire five-year horizon that we're looking at. So like Chad said, at the end of five years, we project that this generates over $400,000 in property tax income for the city. So, you know, we're asking for $450,000, the city gets close to their money back in five years, based on these assumptions here. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have on our property tax assumptions or our ask of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Grinsteiner, Mr. Glaser. Question for Mrs. Carlson. We presently have dollars in our impact fee fund.
Correct.
So we would withdraw that to do this cost share from there?
We could use that fund, yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oderman.
A related question to Mrs. Car... Any other funding sources that are potential on this?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Oderman.
Any other funding sources?
Oh, the other one that I thought of was using the ARPA, because one of the strategic conditions of the ARPA money is community development, infrastructure. That also could be used.
Mr. President, Commissioners, I did want to bring up one point of concern. If the city does decide to move forward with this, I do think we need to be mindful of the public bidding requirements, because you are using public funds to and for the improvement of public infrastructure, so we may have to do a little bit of research on that. Granted, you're not directly contracting to build these improvements, but you're using public funds to reimburse the construction of these improvements, so I would caution, I think that's something that we need to get confirmed, and probably visit with the AG's office to make sure that would be in compliance before that is approved.
No, this is just the first reading, so you've got time to do it.
Well, Ms. Commissioner Oderman, I don't think this is a first reading, but we'll certainly get back to you on that, but I just want to make you aware of that, that that's another level of complexity that we're dealing with here. And certainly you can move to approve at some point, but we just need to be mindful that there might be that concern.
I mean, we did have a program before, it's probably still on the books, I don't think we've ever taken it off, our impact fee program where, I mean, we would reimburse up to 50%... I mean, if you did a project 300,000, we would reimburse 150, but then we did special that portion, but, so maybe that's different, I guess, I don't know.
Correct, I mean, we're talking special assessments versus just contributing to the project, which would be essentially the same as the city building it itself, in other words, so I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm saying we need to look at it to make sure we're not going to have any issues, because we're using public funds to essentially contribute to this project.
I mean, I think, we've talked about this for a while now, I mean, looking at the cost share on some of the collectors and arterials, and I think it's time that we look at a policy to get something going on that. I mean, we're just not going to find much interest in developing raw land here, if we're going to put the burden, with no special assessments, which most cities do special assessments, back on a developer to build arterials and collector roads. Most costly, and nine times out of 10, you don't get any access off of them, so they're... They don't help the development in any way, other than transporting them to the other roads, but... And usually, those roads are a benefit to the whole city, not just that one development, so I think it's time we look at the process, come up with a policy, look at the future of what we had done in 2019, and the probability of getting, you know, 15th all the way through at some point to 30th. We would have some, you know, desirable raw land to develop.
Mr. Dossinger, has anybody from city staff contacted NDSU on this project continuation?
Mr. President, nobody from city staff that I'm aware of has contacted NDSU regarding the 15th Street West extension up to 30th at this time.
I know there has been discussions with DPS, at least continuing 15th, and then whatever we want to name that road going north off 15th. I don't think they're opposed to that. They just have to have that discussion with their board also, school board. The... I'm not opposed to the cost share, but I do agree with Mrs. Winko, that we make sure that we're, everything's legal here before we commit.
What I would do is, I can reach out, do some additional research, I was just reading some attorney general opinions and trying to get some idea, and I can reach out to the AG's office, and I think that depending on the information that we find, I think that would be a great way, a great starting point, to potentially graft the policy that Commissioner Frederick is referring to, and give us a good starting point on what we can and cannot do.
So I know, gentlemen, you're wanting a yea or nay tonight, but I think we have to proceed a little bit, with a little caution here to make sure that we aren't violating century code, so...
I mean, do we bring it to a vote with that caveat, or?
You certainly could, if you wanted, that it would be conditional upon no adverse rulings or opinions from myself or the Attorney General's office, or we could table the request until the next meeting, and I will do everything I can between now and the next meeting to get you an answer from.
I mean, the only difference would be is that we could still do the reimbursement either way, but we might, it might have to be publicly bid instead of privately bid.
Correct, yes, yep. That would require some communication and cooperation, not only with the city, but with the developer, to make sure that those particular improvements that the city is funding are properly followed through that public bidding process, and I'm sure their representatives are aware of the requirements in doing that.
So then my question to you would be, would there be, I mean, you almost have to publicly bid both phases then, the surface and the underground, I mean, you couldn't really just only bid 10% of the surface and... I mean, you couldn't really just only bid 10% of the surface and 100% of the underground or something.
Mr. Frederick, um, there are several options we've discussed internally. Um, we will have a development agreement that follows this, that'll outline when the payment happens, how it happens, all those things. Um, I think what we need today is just some assurance that there will be the funding out there, the $450,000 that they're requesting. Uh, as far as the details of how that comes forward, whether it's publicly bid, privately bid, uh, we've talked about perhaps the developer builds the underground and the city takes the road on themselves, it's about 50/50 where the, the sewer and everything underground is about half of the cost, and the city could just take the road next year and do that, um, next year potentially as a separate project. So there's a lot of different ways we could structure it, um, and we can work with staff to try to find the best way, um, as long as the commission's willing to participate that $450,000. I think the details, we can start to work through how that payment's made and, and what the details are.
Mr. President.
Mr. Otterman.
Yeah, so I, I would just like to, uh, further note here that I, I am in support of cost share. I want to thank Venture, uh, Mr. Glosser and Mr. Grinsteiner and Mr. Shrank for this presentation. I, I think it's a great example of what we as the commission would love to see put in front of us in terms of the detail. Um, they did a really great job of, uh, laying out their case, and I, I really like the argument in terms of what this does in terms of property tax revenue. Um, and I, I, I think this should serve as a model for future developers who want to approach the city for cost shares like this, and I, and I think it's, it's a good example for us to, to share with developers that might approach the, the city and say, hey, uh, we're looking at, you know, maybe approaching you for a cost share and, and, and saying, well, this is the type of information that we need in order to, uh, to support something like that, because had they just come in here and, and said, hey, we'd like to shop, have a cost share, and they just threw out raw numbers, I think it's a lot harder for us to, to support something like this. So I want to, uh, give them some, some credit and, and thank them for the, the well thought out and, um, detailed presentation that they gave tonight.
I would tend to agree on that.
So, moving forward. We make a, a motion to commit to cost share with caveat- in compliance with Century Code.
With, correct, Mr. President, I think if you're going to do that, it would be on the condition that it meets all public, uh, bidding requirements, uh, as required by law and the Century Code.
You have a motion. Who would support that?
So moved.
We have a motion with, um, to cost share with, if it meets all the state requirements upon Century Code and, um, any other laws by Commissioner Otterman? Second by Commissioner Sobeluk, any further discussion?
Are, are we capping the amount? At 450?
At 450.
Would we want to put that in?
You want to put that in there, Mr. Otterman?
I would amend my motion to include that, yes.
Okay. Cap of 450. Any further discussion, questions, concerns?
Mr. President, if I could just clarify, would that be a lump sum of 450 or up to 450?
Up to.
That's your motion, up to 450.
Yes.
And then could we be clear which improvements we are including in that cost share then? So we know which ones are receiving the cost share?
Well, I think that's going to be dependent on-
Yeah, that, I, I would, motion is contingent on that additional information from, uh, Attorney Winko.
I mean, it, yeah, I mean, if it comes back where we have to publicly bid that portion, then I think we can work through that. I think everybody's on board with that, right? I mean, if we have to split it that way or something like that, I think, I think we'll just, I think we want to show support for the 450, I mean, if we can just do it in a one bid, private bid and lump sum, then I think, I think everybody'd be okay with that too, if I'm, but, that's, that's how I understand it anyway, so.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we're not in a violation of any-
Absolutely.
-Century Code, so. Before, when we made a commitment to the Dickinson Hills project, we were going to build the road-
Correct.
-ourselves. So, it was a little bit different than this, so.
I mean, the policy we had before, I mean, when they did the development fee policy before is, I mean, the developer would have to submit their invoice, and city would-
Right, but then we specialized it back.
But then we did specialize it back, but I mean, that's, that's how you'd probably, I mean, I don't think, if it's approved, you're going to just get a check for 450, you're going to have to provide documentation of the costs, so.
Correct, and that was how the discussion somewhat started, uh, just for timeframes and simplifying the process, we kind of came up with the development impact fee, but we understand there could be issues with that, and we're aware that could create public money issues, so.
Okay.
Either way, we're acceptable with, so.
All right. So we have a motion on table by Commissioner Otterman, second by Commissioner Sobeluk, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, next item up is public comments, not on the agenda. If anyone in the audience would like to come forward, has any issues that are not on the agenda this evening, or has any questions for the city commission, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns. Anyone have any concerns or comments? If you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone have any concerns? Seeing no one has any comments or concerns on items not on our agenda, I will plow, uh, close that public section, and Commissioners, I would, uh, ask for a motion to take a short five-minute recess before we proceed.
I will move.
We'll have a five-minute recess. Call the city commission meeting back to order. We're through the public comments section, so we'll jump into public safety. First item up is the fire department with their monthly report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Uh, um, before you, this evening, to present the fire department's monthly report for May, um, just a reminder, uh, to the public, these are the services we provide, they haven't changed in the last year, so we continue to provide those. Um, for the month of May, we had 72 calls for service, that puts us at about 353 year to date, um, it's about a 5% increase from last year, so we're still seeing an increase in calls pretty consistently. Uh, here's a breakdown, month by month, compared to last year, so we're, we're pretty much up every month except for the one month, and it doesn't really seem like how June started so far, we're, we're probably going to be way up as well.
You had a few calls this weekend, right?
Uh, I believe we had 20 calls in three days, two of them are structured fires, so we've been a little busy. So, here's a breakdown by call types, uh, EMS calls like always are our number one call, these are providing assistance to the ambulance or, um, some of the more critical calls, and that's followed by hazardous conditions, so CO calls, uh, we've, we have seen an increase in, um, gas line breaks, stuff like that with all the construction work going on, and then false alarm, false calls, so alarm systems going off, um, with some of the inclement weather with the rain and stuff, we do see a lot of malfunctioning, we do get called to those. Calls by station, uh, we had a significantly higher number, uh, in our south part of town, south of the freeway that Station One responded to. Um, usually it's, it's pretty close to being even, but we did see a little bit of an increase, um, sorry, for Station One. Here's just a heat map of kind of where we were seeing our calls, they're spread out all across town, but you can see that we did have a lot there south of the freeway. Response times, uh, we did actually bring all of our response times down, we saw about a 17-second decrease from our Station One responses, which is putting us significantly below, um, the benchmarks the NFPA sets for us. It's not that we're speeding the calls, it's we're getting faster, getting our gear on, getting into the truck a little faster, uh, in getting there. Um, and the same thing with Station Two, we saw about a 40-second decrease coming out of the, uh, the public safety center, so we are bringing those down, that's what we do want to see. Uh, I don't know that we're going to get much quicker from Station One, that's, that's a pretty good response time. Training hours, uh, we were down a little bit from last month, we did 340 training hours, uh, for the month of May, it's about 2965 for the year, we're about 60-second complete with those requirements that, that are put on us by, um, ISO, uh, and that included Fire One, Hazmat, Red Card, we did get all of our people ready for the, um, summer season and brush fires, and then we put all of our new SCBA's in service, and that required some in-service training and then some EMS training. Fire prevention, 252 re- routine inspections, um, 66, uh, other fire prevention activities, and one certificate of occupancy was issued by our fire prevention. Community activities, we were at the touch of truck, uh, the Murph Challenge we did for Memorial, or, uh, for Memorial Day, uh, we did several, um, station tours, and then, like we do every year, I guess, apparently for like the last 20 years, at the end of school, we go spray the kids with water. So that, that seems to be a really big hit. And then one of the big things that we did have complete in May was our high school firefighter academy, we had 15 high school students complete that, and we did hold a graduation ceremony that, uh, the mayor was a guest speaker at, um, it was really exciting to see the parents come down and support, um, and we did gain three applicants for our part-time out of this high school, uh, group that have applied that we're going to be interviewing in the next few days to bring them on part-time, that are 18, they, they graduated, they're 18. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Presno. Any questions? Uh, ceremony, it was a nice cer- ceremony for the family members, and I, I think they, uh, kids have a new perspective now on, yeah, what you guys do, so.
A little bit, yep, and we do appreciate you, uh, coming and speaking at that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Happy to do it. Next up is engineering, we have a KLJ task order amendment, the Millen overlay. And this will be handled by In Arm City Engineer Marshick.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have an Amendment One to Task Order Number 2104-01576 of our agreement with KLJ Engineering LLC on the 2022 Millen overlay project. This amendment provides construction and post-construction phase services, which include items like resident project representatives, services, and furnishing record drawings. This work will be billed hourly with a not-to-exceed amount of $364,000. City engineering staff is asking for your approval of this task order amendment. Do you have any questions for myself on this item?
Is, is this an item, is this budgeted? Was this amount budgeted?
Yep, this is standard, um, each year we kind of phase out how we do this, especially with the Special Improvement District, we only, uh, task a portion as we move forward through the project.
What is the total amount we had budgeted for the Millen overlay?
Um, I believe the total project was 4.5 million for this year.
Do we break that down to what we pay for the engineers out of that 4.5?
Yep, that includes everything in that 4.5 million.
Any other que- questions, Commissioners? Now I'd look for a motion on this task order amendment.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And I think you have also the Fourth Avenue East Urban Roads Project, the acceptance of the bid.
Yes, thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. Before you are, uh, in a approval for acceptance of bid, for bids on the Fourth Avenue East project, this runs from 21st Street East to 26th Street East. In the past, we had brought this forward to you as a botuminous pavement project, and those bids came in 42% over the engineer estimate, and so at that time, we asked you to reject those bids. Uh, we went back with the help of Highlands Engineering and designed the project as a concrete road, and that's what these bids came in for, we had two bids. The low bid was opened on May 15th, uh, 2020 this year, and was with Strata Corporation. Their bid was the amount of $1,387,124.15. This is approximately 12% higher than our engineer's estimate, and mobilization accounted for a loud, large amount of the discrepancy between that bid amount and the engineer's estimate. Uh, as an urban's roads project, we received federal funds, uh, towards this project, limited to $800,000. So the remaining amount, if you approve this bid, would be $587,124.15. Do you have any questions for myself moving forward with this bid?
Commissioners, any questions? You said we received two bids on this?
We did receive two bids on this one.
What's the total amount we, that we had budgeted, was it 500,000? Because the, the reimbursement's 800,000, you said, right, from?
That is correct. Um, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what we had budgeted for this project.
I think the original, um, es- or your estimation was 1.3, wasn't it?
I believe so, but I'm not confident in that number.
That rings a bell. 1.3, I think.
I think it was 1.3. Commissioners, what is your desire on this bid?
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion?
Do we, I mean, any explanation why the MOB?
We had some discussion on that, we're not sure why the MOB costs, other than, uh, Strata Corporation is out of Grand Forks.
I mean, they're moving their profit to line one because it comes out first.
Wouldn't surprise me, but.
Yeah, we're seeing a lot of that lately.
We're seeing a lot of fees. Any other questions or comments? So we have on the table, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk, second by Commissioner Walla. Hearing no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item up is, we have Public Works, and the first item is a drinking water state revolving fund loan application resolution, and this will be handled by Public Works Directors Erhoff.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Uh, the resolution before you is authorizing filing for the Safe Drinking Water Act Clean Water Application. Um, this is for the loan for the water main and, and lead replacement project, uh- the loan for the water main and lead replacement project south side of town. This authorizes us to get the application and also for Leah Upchurch, who is doing the information and the application, to provide information to the state for the SRF project. I think I've discussed this before a little bit, going with the Clean Water SRF on the lead line replacements. Originally, it was ninety percent. Now I was looking at forty percent reimbursement, but I'm talking to him next week about that. There's some change in the reimbursement, but this gives us the authority to at least apply and get the process going.
Thank you, Mrs. Erhoff. Any questions for Mr. Erhoff on this loan application? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla, Mr. Frederick, Mrs. Sobeluk, Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And next up, we're all waiting.
Drumroll.
The Public Works Annual Report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. We haven't done one for a couple of years. We've put together portions of our annual report that's included in your packet. So we're going through this this evening. It is somewhat lengthy, but we're going to go as fast as we can. I do want to kind of ask the commission to look at some of the information we provide, some of the metrics you might be interested in, so we can then shorten it again for our monthly or quarterly report. It's kind of our goal for this. So this is 2021 Annual Report, and I thank you for allowing us to present this. So on behalf, oops, sorry.
No, I think that was just some feedback.
On behalf of our entire Public Works team, it is my privilege to present the Department's 2021 Annual Report. The residents and property owners rely on us every day to provide the essential services expected in our community. We are committed to provide dependable, high-quality and responsive Public Works and utility services for the residents of the city of Dickinson and southwestern North Dakota. We are part of your daily lives, providing you safe drinking water, collection and conveyance of wastewater and stormwater, high-quality wastewater treatment and reuse water, street repair and winter operations, garbage collection along with recycling and disposal, making sure our cemeteries, trails, mosquito control and maintenance of our city buildings and facilities are safe and well-maintained. Public Works is behind the scenes, making sure city vehicles are ready, are safe and ready to respond. We are continuing to expand our public outreach and public access to our technology with our meter replacement program. The new fixed base meter system will give citizens access to real-time meter information. The Public Works Department consists of sixty-five dedicated full-time staff and approximately fifteen seasonal employees that operate and maintain the city's infrastructure. Public Works includes many divisions. There's the General Fund and Enterprise Fund, the different divisions under those departments. This is our org chart, current organization chart. In 2022 budget, I will, requesting some changes in our organizational chart. I'm hoping that will help recruit and retain staff. I have eliminated the name chief, and we're bringing in supervisor instead of chief. We're changing the senior name to foreman. And we also included an operator to achieveable position that we'll present for you at this year's budget. So breakdown of our enterprise fund revenue, broke down by percentages. As you can see, water and wastewater are the largest, followed by solid waste. Total enterprise revenue is almost seventeen million dollars. Admin General Fund, broke down percent of the dollars. As you can see, street is the largest, followed by buildings and grounds. Administrative compliance, in, new to our team in 2021 was the environmental compliance technician. This position has been a tremendous help in all of our environmental compliance requirements and will continue as we prepare and develop a required industrial pretreatment program. Community Water Emergency Response Plan was developed this year. It's a requirement of the American Water Infrastructure Act of 2018, which is governed by EPA. The ERP describes the utility strategies, resources, plans, and procedures to prepare for and respond to incidents, natural or man-made, that threaten life, property, or environment. This position is also working with the State Revolving Fund, as mentioned before, in developing our project requirements for lead service line replacements. Some of the capital projects ongoing, we dealt with in 2021. As I mentioned, the meter interface units and fixed base system, the landfill leachate station, leach, excuse me, leachate lift station is still under construction. We've been waiting for some control panels for that. Subtlety Receiving Station has just been started and opened. The landfill modification and vertical expansion continues, city hall remodel, annual mill and overlay, we assist in that project, and West Ridge mausoleum addition, which has just started last week, and of course, the main and lead service line replacements in Sim Street Phase One. At this time, I'll have our David Clemmer, Operations Manager, talk about his division.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. As you see on your slide there, one of the amenities that we cover in Public Works is our cemeteries on the building's ground site. We have six cemeteries with the one mausoleum, soon to be two mausoleums in addition to the new building there. You, over on the left-hand side, quite a bit of acres that are mowed. That can, depending on the weather, that could be rainfall, that could be one, two, three times a year. So, but over there on the side, you see how many graves, burials, niches. Pretty active in twenty-one. Then another part of our building's ground site, which is just a couple of mini that we've highlighted, is our vector and our weed control. There was forty-three point two-one acre sprayed. We had fifteen evening fogs that were done and gallons of weeds, gallons of agent that we sprayed was four thousand eight hundred and, eight, four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine gallons. Our forestry, forestry, you know, was kind of saddened to us last year. We ended up as one of our team members. But kind of what took place in twenty-one is total trees planted. There was a hundred and seven of them planted. Unfortunately, we did have to remove sixty-eight of them due to disease. Flowers planted was a hundred and fifty-five, and op works, there was thirty-nine op works that came in with trees down, branches, stuff on the boulevard. Onto our fleet operations, we got a five-year comparison here. From two thousand seventeen to twenty-one, you'll see seventeen and twenty were some pretty high increases. The reason due to that, there was a lot of equipment that was repairs that were farmed out to CAT, all Butler machinery and all that stuff that wasn't dealt with in-house. A lot of it on our yellow iron. In twenty-twenty there, we had a couple pieces of equipment that took some pretty catastrophic failures. So, which are, due to the increase. In twenty-one, seems like we got a little bit under control, our, our activity due to the light winter that we've had, that we witnessed in twenty-one was very nice to us. So our maintenance costs there, a number of our work orders versus our maintenance costs, you can see. On our fuel comparison, this thing has actually been pretty stable over the last five years. Unfortunately, there has been some spikes here recently in twenty-two with current fuel prices topping seventeen to twenty percent. So been pretty steady there with, with our die diesel and our gasoline. Our DEF has always been pretty slow, low there. So doing pretty good to maintain that. Our fuel cost, as you can see, from seventeen, it started ramping up. Then twenty, we took a nice, twenty and twenty-one were extremely lower than the first three due to our light winters we had those two years in twenty and twenty-one. Over in our street operations, we got our snow and ice control, sweeping, road repairs. On our brine salt, we, it's purchased in tons. Our brine that we, we make and we get is in gallons. Our beet juice, which is an additive that we use to make our brine, was, you know, thirteen thousand, six hundred seventy-two gallons that was purchased. On our sweeping, this is our sweepers going around. Hopefully, with some training that we got com- coming up, and we got some outside resources that are going to help with some training. Just got to get it scheduled. Should see those numbers increase a little bit in twenty-two. But on our sweeping, you'll see how much sand and dirt and gravel that we pick up from what's on our streets. Road repairs, our road oil, this is what we use for our dura patching, our sealant for our crack seal. Quite a, quite a bit of stuff that we do, that we have to, to get to maintain our roads. Ice control by tons, you see our, up there, our sand road, salt and brine. Again, twenty and twenty-one, pretty low on the numbers compared to seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Twenty and twenty-one winters were pretty mild compared to what we witnessed this year. Our ice control by gallons, again, our brine versus our beet juice. Our beet juice is a product that helps us make our brine. So as you can see, the decrease from, you know, eighteen and nineteen was pretty high. Twenty and twenty-one, pretty low due to the winters. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Prowse.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I want to put a strong emphasis on our, on the service area that we service throughout southwest North Dakota, as I'll reference back to this throughout my section of the report. We're one of thirteen Subtitle D landfills in the state of North Dakota that can accept municipal solid waste. Our regional area covers southwest North Dakota, as Mr. Zuroff eluded earlier. We go all the way from the Montana border to Allmont, and then from the South Dakota border up to Kildare, less a couple counties. In our service area, there's actually ten counties and twenty-six communities that bring material into our sites. Our overall tonnages for 2021 was seven, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-four tons, which is approximately four hundred and fifty tons more than we had in 2020. Of the, of the seventy, almost seventy-two thousand tons, the three major, or three key players there are household materials at thirty-seven thousand, four hundred tons, construction materials, just about forty-nine hundred ton, and then inert materials, which was forty-three hundred Talking about the household materials, as I said earlier, over fifty percent of our household materials are actually generated outside of our city limits. It's about a five hundred ton difference between what's generated in city and out of city. So about fifty-one percent is coming from out of city. That does include all residential and commercial accounts. One of the things that we are looking for, for starting July first of 2022 here is, in the past, we, we allowed our residents to dump unlimited amounts of residential household materials in our facilities for no charge. We are looking to implement a utility bill requirement starting July first, where they have to bring a utility bill along with a driver's license to get that free dump for that month. There was a, quite a bit of abuse coming in, and with our new employees on our scale, it's very hard to verify who's from in-city and who's coming from out-of-city limits. So this will definitely help verify residents dumping in, for free, if they're coming from in-city. Again, household materials only. All the other materials do have a service charge with them. Talking a little bit about the collections on a five-year residential, last year, for the month of December, we had a total of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-five stops. That's broken out, a little over eight thousand stops per week that our residential trucks pick up on the collection trash side. There's been a steady growth, obviously about thirteen hundred more stops than we had in, in 2020, and almost ten thousand more stops than what we had five years ago in 2017. On the solid waste collection sides for the commercial accounts, there was also a little bit of growth of just about four hundred stops from 2020. Other than that, that remains as a steady growth with our community. On the recycling side, this is the single-stream recycling materials that are hauled to Demcon Industries, which is in Shakopee, Minnesota. Twenty-twenty-one, we hauled eight, eight hundred and fifteen ton of single-stream recycling commingled, which is very comparable to year 2020. We did start this project in October of 2018. Then there was a spike in 2019, more so due to probably compilation of materials. It's a new program, and, and it looks like we're going to be running a pretty steady baseline right now until we add additional recycling into our program. Our set-out rate for the recycling program is at sixty-three point seven-five percent, which is above the national average of fifty-eight to sixty percent. Of those eight hundred and fifteen tons, forty-five percent of that is fiber materials, twenty-three percent of that is cardboard, and then glass and residuals makes up approximately sixteen percent.
Mr. Prowse?
Yes.
The total amount of deposited material from outside the city limits, do you have that broke down? What do we, what do we receive from the other communities, the other?
The total tons?
Yeah, the total tonnage. I know you had a total tonnage at the beginning of what was deposited in the landfill. What, what comes from outside of Dickinson?
Nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty tons comes from outside of the city limits. Nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six ton come from inside the city limits, which makes up the thirty-seven, thirty-seven thousand, I'll just backtrack here a minute, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight ton.
Okay. So we're about fifty percent of?
It's like a forty-nine, fifty-one percent. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. As I said, glass and recycling, glass and residuals makes up about sixteen percent of our recycling that's hauled to Demcon. Both of those materials are at a cost to the city of Dickinson. Glass is obviously a negative commodity, and then residuals would be your garbage that's shipped along with that material. So I just wanted to point that out, that sixteen percent of that eight hundred and fifteen ton is basically trash that should not be going, which is costing us the money to get it there, so. The recycling site tonnages, this is what's coming off of our, last year, we had two recycling sites within the city limits. This year, we're down to one, which is located at six fifteen West Broadway. Off the two sites, seven hundred and seven ton of the yard waste were compostable grass, while eight hundred and fifty-eight ton was contaminated grass. That leaves a total of fifteen hundred and sixty-six tons of yard waste that brought, got brought in. Fifty-five percent of that was contaminated, which means it went straight into our landfill. The yards, yard, the disposal sites in city limits are getting abused on the yard waste side. There's no way we can work our way through it. We've tried doing some cameraing. We've went back and did some finding on it, but it's a consistent abuse because we can't monitor those sites twenty-four seven. Hundred, one hundred ton make up the paper, which we ship out to, through Menkota Recycling, and five hundred and seventy ton was cardboard related that goes also through Menkota Recycling to different facilities and fiber plants.
Mr. Prowse, what's the number one contaminant?
Number one contaminant would be tree branches and shrubs, which will take out the clutch on our turner, followed by plastic bags. But we've seen everything from mattresses, appliances, to oil filters, used oil, styrofoam, construction material.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Continuing on the utility side, Dwayne Saspal, the Water Utilities Manager. I kind of wanted to focus on some of the, what our infrastructure has and how much flows we take and send out and treat. So we'll start off with the water utilities on the, on this service request. It is broken down into three categories. PMs are preventative maintenance. This is our routine maintenance that are within our utilities infrastructure. Some examples are like checking extinguishers, checking filters, checking air releases in the sewer force main. Second category that we break Second category that we break it down is in service requests. These are requests outside of our department, like sewer smells, low water pressure, curb stops needs, things of that nature. Also, then we go to work orders and this is everything that is within. This is internal projects that need to be completed. Our operators see this, if they see like a drainage ditch that needs to be cleared, they'll put it in there so we can do it at a later time. And this kind of shows through all our departments on what, how many requests that we get from the public, internal and out. This shows how much water we sold to the public last year. We sold over nine hundred and twenty-six million gallons of water. You can kind of see it by year by year. This is something that most people don't see, but we just, it's what the public consumed. To that consumption, we have our water vendor. Our water vendor is located at six twenty West Broadway. Last year, we sold a little over one point two million gallons. You can see that in June and July, those are our busiest months, just by, for construction mainly needs. Within our purchasing of water, we had last year, four point five percent water loss. On EPA's website, the national water average loss was sixteen percent. And this usually includes like water breaks, fires, old meters that we have throughout the city. And this is non-trackable water that we couldn't track or we didn't track.
Mr. Saspal?
Yes.
I mean, quite the discrepancy for three years there. Did we determine, did we find out? I mean, we jumped to almost ten percent and then nine percent, thirteen percent, and then back down to four point five. What was the factor there? Was it the?
So, in some of these, you're going to, it depends on our water breaks too. If we have like major breaks that drain our tanks, I mean, our water loss is going to shoot high.
Okay, so that's probably a lot.
Yeah, it, it is a lot right there. And then the biggest, another contributor to it too is we did our meter program, which we've been installing those new meters throughout the houses and we feel that that was a contributor to it too.
Okay.
On this one, we have a five-year comparison on new meter installs. This is not our meter project, this is only on new developments. So, last year, we did sixty-four new meter installations. We also get work orders from utility billing. This is separate from our op works. This, this is examples for, these are delinquents, checking meters, water offs, this only comes from within city hall. Going on to our sewer department, we did a five-year sewer cleaning. Every year, we clean sewers throughout the town to prevent backups. In 2020, we were digital to track our cleaning. We tried to clean about a quarter of our town in a year. If you can kind of see, in 2020, we did a lot more. We really had a calm summer or calm winter, so we were able to get out there a lot easier. This map right here is the wastewater collection system. The yellow markings on the map show what areas we got cleaned in 2021. The different colored areas on the map shows what, where the wastewater flows. So, you can see the different colors, like the purple on the top right corner, that is just collected into our lift fourteen. And so, when we clean these, we clean them by basins so we can help clean the whole area. Last year, we have the sewer collected. We collected over ninety-one million gallons of wastewater from the refinery. I just wanted to, what the refinery contributes to the city's infrastructure. You can see that in 2021, there was a almost double increase. The refinery went from diesel to biodiesel. Also, we collect wastewater from the septic haulers. We just built that new septic receiving station over by lift twenty-two. Last year, we collected over almost five hundred thousand gallons, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand gallons of wastewater from the septic haulers. Water reclamation. Last year, we sold one hundred and, almost one hundred and fifteen million gallons of reuse to the refinery. Again, in 2021, there was that upgrade in biodiesel, they increased it by double of what they take from us. In the reclamation facility, I just wanted to let everybody aware of some of the maintenance that we do. Last year, we spent almost three hundred and ninety-four hours to land apply almost four point seven million gallons of sludge. Sludges, settled particles, and dead bugs pulled from the treatment process of the plant. And we have some land that is to the south of our property that, or south of the reclamation facility where we land apply all this. And this is what we try to do in dry weather. So, this year has been kind of difficult with it being so wet, so. Kind of want to conclude in the last two slides. The water reclamation, water reclamation facility treated over seven hundred and fifty-five million gallons of wastewater. And out of that seven hundred and fifty-five million, five hundred and sixty-four million of that, we released to the river. So, that's actually potential sales that we have in the future if we ever want to move forward on it. So, and that concludes all of the rest.
Or Phil Patterson.
Well, we are looking at other options for reuse, as you're aware.
Right.
So, I think that's one asset that the city has is to expand our use of reuse water. I think it's great.
It is, it is, it was a, a great project that the people before us planned for and staff, you know, helped formulate, so it generates some nice income for the city.
It's been, when I got on board, the plant was just starting to be built and it's been a great, great to be part of this, that whole project. I just have a couple more slides and then we'll take any questions or you guys may have. Wanted to bring up our Dickinson Works app. We have, in 2021, we had four thousand two hundred and sixty-six people signed up for reminders. And then the notification sent in 2021, we sent twenty-one thousand notifications for people that wanted those notifications in our Dickinson Work app. And again, if you want to get signed up, please call our, our number, four five six seven nine seven nine. A couple events we did last year, we did Public Works and participated in our Touch a Truck in May. Last year, we did again this year and that's a great event that I think will continue and will continue to expand and get bigger. Also, in 2021, we had fifteen hundred flame armor maples were presented to the middle school. And Vern Quam was, did that for Arbor Day last year in 2021. And then another special event we did, Street Department participated with the downtown cleanup with a bit local Big Sticks players and their sponsors and families and that went well. Again, this year, we're trying to expand our outreach, do more with different events and community events, which is, I think, helping a lot with, with our division. I guess I'm open for any questions. I want to thank you for listening and it looked like a lot of slides, but I think we went through it pretty quick. But there's a lot of information there. I want to be as transparent as possible. Any information you want from Public Works, we'd be glad to present.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zurov, and I thank your staff for all the hard work, great job that they do throughout the year. I think the people really appreciate all the hard work you guys put in on a daily basis. So, keep our city looking great. It's, I know it's just, it's one of those tasks, people just kind of expect to be, things to be taken care of. And sometimes it goes unappreciated, but we, I know, we as a, as a commission appreciate all you guys' hard work, so.
And I know buildings and grounds trying to get out there mowing if it quit raining, we'd get the weeds taken down soon, those sort of things. We'll get to them, you know, as soon as weather allows, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, our next item up is planning. We have a special use permit for a columbarium at twenty-six, I mean, twenty-sixty-seven First Street West. This is resolution fourteen dash twenty-two. And this will be handled by interim city administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has received a request for a special use permit from Stevenson Funeral Home Incorporated for columbarium, which is a discretionary use provided for in the Dickinson City Code. It'll be located at twenty-sixty-seven First Street West, which is within the city of Dickinson city limits. The SUP was heard by the planning commission, we held the public hearing on May eighteenth of 2022 and no public comments were given. The planning commission and staff would both recommend approval of resolution fourteen dash twenty-two as presented for the SUP zero zero four dash twenty-two for Stevenson Funeral Home as presented. I see that Mr. Nick Stevenson is in the audience if there's any questions regarding this. And there are a few images of what this would look like, provided by Highlands Engineering.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for city staff or the applicant? I guess the applicant has.
Good evening, Kenzie Robertson, Highlands Engineering. As I mentioned, over the last year and a half, been working with city staff to amend the zoning ordinance for this. And as part of that zoning ordinance amendment, this special use permit is required for any funeral services or religious assemblies that want to have that columbarium. In our application, we propose to have six columbarium with ninety-six niches where the urns would be located. Working along with city staff, we believe that we've met all the requirements for this permit. We've also submitted a draft bond and estimate. The cost relocate this to a city cemetery is estimated at twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to buy all the lots, install the foundations, relocate the columbarium themselves if that were ever necessary. In response, we had from city staff on May thirty-first, it was to include an inflationary rate, rate to the bond. We're proposing that a ten-year reclamation bond be utilized for this project with a three-point-one percent interest rate, inflation rate to account for any additional costs in the future. That would come to a bond that would be purchased for sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. At the end of this period, the bond would then be up for renewal and at that time, the city could request a renewal if they deem fit. It's relatively low value for some headache that would be caused by the city. That would be up to you guys to renew that if you wish at that time. I guess if there's any questions for either myself or Mr. Stevenson, we're here to answer them.
City staff, any?
Mr. President, Commissioners, the only concern we had, and I was copying on some correspondence from a turn, excuse me, from Mr. Hadley before he left, was that he did had, he did had, did, excuse me, request the inflation percent to be more accurate projection, given what we may see in the future. And so, we would just obviously want that included in some capacity to make sure that the city is covered several years from now in the event that it does have to be relocated. So, if the city is going to approve it, we would just approve it with that understanding that that inflation would be in there and I believe he's indicated that it would be.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve fourteen dash twenty-two by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item up this evening is Commissioners, item ten. Commission, do you have any items you wish to discuss that are not on the agenda? Hearing no one has any items to discuss, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.